Mayor, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for January 13th, 2022, to order at 7:01 PM. On roll call, council members, Ballas Schary.
Here.
Dennis.
Here.
Goleback.
Here.
Pellegrine.
Here.
Sheridan.
Here.
Council President Fasolo.
Here.
Mayor Coletti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Erin. Welcome, everyone. Whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require, at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now therefore be advised that the meeting's requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing a special notice in the Herald News and by publishing such notice in the office of the barrel clerk and as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Said notice was posted and transmitted on January 8th, 2022, and published on January 11th, 2022. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor. On the agenda this evening, we have Resolution R-55-22, Introduce Ordinance Number 22-02 on first reading. Be it resolved that an ordinance entitled in ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the borough, Chapter 3, entitled Department of Local Government, more specifically Section 2-27, entitled Police Department, by creating a new section to be referred to as 2-27, dot 27, entitled Emergency Medical Services of Elmwood Park, and deleting and removing all references to the Elmwood Park Volunteer Ambulance Corps found in the borough code and designating those pertinent sections as reserved. Be passed and adopted on first reading. And be it resolved that a final hearing on said ordinance will be heard in the municipal building on Monday, January 24th, 2022, at 4:45 PM or soon thereafter, same can be heard, at which time any persons interested in said ordinance can be heard. Be it further resolved that the borough clerk bein she is hereby authorized to advertise an illegal newspaper notice of introduction and final hearing as required by law.
Mr. Feligno, would you mind breaking this down for us?
Yes, Mayor. So this is the ordinance that is putting in place the new department under the Police Department for our own paid EMS service in the borough of Elmwood Park. This is a fast-moving situation. We've been working every day, hours on end, putting this together. Mr. Ingraffi did a phenomenal job with this ordinance. Thank you for expediting it and doing such a good job with it. We're excited about this, and it's all coming together. We anticipate that we will have our own working service by February 1st.
Thank you. Mayor, have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to thank the chief and Mr. Ingraffi for getting this together. I know it's vital to our community, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Fasolo. Anybody else? Call a roll, please.
First by Pellegrine. Second by Fasolo. On roll call, council members, Ballas Schary.
Yes.
Dennis.
Yes.
Goleback.
Yes.
Pellegrine.
Yes.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Council President Fasolo.
Yes.
Motion carries. That's all I have on the special meeting agenda, Mayor.
Okay, I think we should open it to the public, though, at this moment. A motion to open to the public? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Anyone from the public here to speak at this point?
Can I? Are they to have to speak on this ordinance?
No.
Darcey Swetler, 124 Phillipa.
Who are you, masked lady?
Ma'am, if you're not in Latin.
You're not in Latin. I'd like to thank Mike. I'd like to thank the chief in Sal, too, for everything you do for this town, and we do need an ambulance corps, because especially the other day, down the street for me, it was a Carlstadt ambulance. I don't know how bad the case was, they took the woman out, but what do you call, I really want to thank each and every one of yous for doing it. Thank you.
Doris, I think we should get another chair and get you back up here.
Hi, good evening. Dominic Scalci on 120 East 54th Street. On the issue of the Elmwood Park ambulance service, I would just like to know if you would care to, at some point, comment about how it would be handled as far as fees, and also have you determined what percentage of the population does not have medical coverage, and how that would tie into providing ambulance service? I know that's been discussed before, and if you would care to mention that at some point, I think we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the mayor have a minute?
Yes, please.
So it's nothing different than we've had with Little Falls. They were billing our residents' insurance. Whatever the insurance pays is what we will accept. It will be the same format. People that are not residents will be full balance billed, and we did not do any studies on the population and who does and does not have insurance. That does not factor into our decision.
Thank you. No one else wishes to speak? I will close the public portion.
No.
Oh, okay, Jeff. A little slow there today, Jeff.
Jeffrey Frytag, 35 from the drive. My only question is this. If an out-of-towner, how is the balance of the bill? Do we bill them, or if an ambulance of an in-town person, if an ambulance is not available, and it goes out as a, you know, your shared service with another town? How is?
And they have, they could bill them.
Okay.
It wouldn't be our bill. If our ambulance doesn't respond to it, we can't bill. But there's going to be mutual aid calls because...
That's what I'm talking about, mutually.
Yeah, there's going to be mutual aid.
And in the mutual aid situation, if an ambulance, say, from Lodi, for example, comes and services a resident, that's, they can, they can, I don't know what their procedure is, but if they are a billing service, they can bill, just like now, if the paramedics come to your home, we have no control over that, and you'll get a bill.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, though, if they can bill, and that other ambulance comes based upon one not being available, you will be billed?
They can be, not by us, they wouldn't be billed. If we didn't respond. The other, if the other town is a service that bills, then they, they have the right to bill, and we don't have the right to stop that.
Okay, so originally, I know when Little Falls, it was going to be, it wouldn't cost a citizen anything.
No, Little Falls billed, didn't charge residents, only took insurance, but they, they full billed any out of, like, say, two people from Teaneck are on Route 4 and getting an accident, and somebody has to go to the hospital, Little Falls would bill them full.
What I'm talking about, if, if another town had to come.
That's beyond our control.
Okay, so the two ambulances, and they're going to be stacked. There are no full-time employees, there are...
As of now, no.
I think the term is per diems.
Per diem.
Yeah, 28 hours max.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else here to speak? If not, I'll close the public portion. Motion to adjourn, please. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
These proceedings are closed, for the moment. No, 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 Daniel, we can't go home. No, I, I...
Be careful, man.
Are you kidding?
Okay, Mayor, I'd like to call to order the work session meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for January 13th, 2022, to order at 7:09 PM. On roll call, council members, Ballas Schary.
Here.
Dennis.
Here.
Goleback.
Here.
Pellegrine.
Here.
Sheridan.
Here.
Council President Fasolo.
Here.
Mayor Coletti.
Here. Thank you, Erin. You might have heard this earlier, but I'm going to repeat myself. Whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require, at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual notice in the record and Herald News of Woodland Park, and by posting such notice in the office of the barrel clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and by notifying interested citizens. Notice was posted on January 8th, 2022, and published on January 11th, 2022. Would anyone from the public like to be heard at this point?
Uh, yes.
We have one customer. Okay?
Dominic Scalci on again, 120 East 54th Street. I want to say that the borough did a fantastic job with the Riverside effort to test for COVID-19 yesterday. It was a fantastic setup. They had two computers here, they had six, those ID machines, they had six employees. I don't know if you saw it, it was, it was a very, very nice operation. And I don't know how many we got, you may want to, how many people actually signed up. I know in order for them to come, there has to be, has to be a worthwhile number. I work under the, I have some numbers that I work with, and I believe the reimbursement is approximately $40 for a vaccination. And I work under the assumption it's about $100 for a COVID-19 test. I have no idea, that's just numbers that I work with. So I counted at least 75 appointments, and I know they were walk-ins, so, but my concern is that, that was a fantastic effort that the borough did, putting it together and getting them to come, and they're, I'm hoping that we're able to get some kind of vaccination effort again. The vaccination for boosters is extremely low throughout the state, and Elmwood Park, we're doing pretty good. Our dope, first dose is 73%, but we're still on the low end of all the 70 boroughs. I have a list here of all 70 boroughs. We would rank as fifth lowest, below us Amaha, Lindhurst, Garfield, and Wellington. So everything that we can do to increase that percentage, we all hope and believe that this is, you know, this is going to be the, the last big wave of COVID, but we don't know that. We don't know that the next one won't be worse. So the more we can do to get everybody prepared in advance, so if there's anything that we can do, again, I don't think they get very much in vaccination, so whether we can get a private entity or a public, like Bergen, Newbridge, so, these are the energies, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to... Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yeah, to your point, I think if we can somehow hire a, an assassin to assassinate that bug, that probably would be the ultimate resolve to the problem. But to your point, the, I've been noticing the numbers right from the beginning. Basically, it hits the population evenly, and I've been using Elmwood Park and Garfield's numbers. They basically are about 32,000 people, I believe, Erin?
Garfield has a bit more than 32, yeah.
About 30, 33, 34, and I think we're at 23, at 24 now with the new census. And about one, your numbers of afflicted people are about one-third more, so it seems to me that when it hits the population, it's hitting it in an even percentage, as far as area goes, and I guess logistics you would add to that. But to your point, we are stifled. This week, the last two weeks, our BA's had his hands full here, between the police department, the fire department, the people that work in the municipal building, but to everyone's credit, the ship has still been moving. Now, it hasn't been moving at 30 miles an hour and anticipating hitting that, that iceberg, but we're moving at maybe about 10 or 15 miles an hour, and it's, and it's working very well. Anyone else here to speak? If not, I'll close the public portion. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have the engineer's report before I turn it over to Tom. Item number 1A, we have a proposal for design services for the 2022 NJDOT Municipal Aid Road Program submitted on behalf of Alamo Group.
Tom, and council, if you look at the numbers, the concrete curve, and we're estimating the construction cost at $671,000. We were awarded $206,000. That means we'd have to bond $465,000 for this one project. I always thought a grant was supposed to save us money, not cost us money. I can understand a project, if it's a few dollars more, we have to go in order to get to a certain point, so be that, but to me, this is completely out of whack. I believe the, our mantra should be, stick close to the grant amount, and that should be the scope of the work.
Mayor, can I add a comment? I agree with you, and this was not the scope of what we applied for. We applied from the Boulevard, kind of halfway up the block, because down by the firehouse, it's perfectly paved. So, Tom, if you can look back, please, to what we actually applied for, we applied for probably half the length.
Boulevard to Vinnie.
Yeah, so that, this number should probably slice in half, if not better. So I was shocked to see it, too, but that, that's not, if you drive, half of Grove is perfect, the other half is what we need, so.
And Daniel, being that we seem to be agreeing here, which is very nice. 1B, I have the same problem with 1B. The, the cost here, estimated cost for the project is 389,000. Estimated grant on this was, let's see, grant amount's 122. If you do the math, you'll see that there's a differential of...
The grant, when you combine the two grants, estimated cost is 389,000.
Right.
Grant amount's 252,000.
252,000.
136,795 over the grant.
Now here, once again, I don't think we should get into the, the method here of exceeding the grant money only when we have to, would be a situation where if you're only going to get 90% of the block done, we need to add another 10% to get to the corner and make it a clean demarcation point.
Mayor, we do that all the time.
Well, Daniel...
All, all the time, we get grants, and we have to, very rarely, very rarely have we ever gotten grants that cover 100% of a project. I, I can't really, maybe, maybe if there's a, I don't know, the DOT paving, and we know we're going to get 200 grand, but I mean, if we go back to the CDBG grants, we bonded over the grant amount almost every time, so I don't see why we would stop that. The work needs to get done.
If you look at the bonding amount, in the last year, we're close to $5 million, which to me is completely outrageous. It's things like this, you're getting a grant for $252,000 and spending another $136,000 over that. Now, I, I believe that the scope of work should be within the 252. If it's another $20,000, $15,000, so be it, but not 2/3, or 33%, or 40%, whatever the math breaks down, on the, on the cost over the, the grant amount.
Do you have a suggestion?
Yes, my suggestion would be that we ask Tom to take a look at this and make, make the project fit closer to the grant amount. How's the council feel about that idea?
If we've identified these streets, that means there's a need to pave them, so we're kicking the can down the road. We have streets that we've identified that needed, needed dressing, and it's 2/3 off. So if we didn't get this grant, at some point, we would need to do this work, and that would come out of the road program. So you can look at it your way, Mayor, but we're getting a good amount of work done in streets that need it for 2/3 off. I think that's a very good deal.
I completely disagree with you, and I, I don't like the philosophy. I think the philosophy is what's been causing our bonding going up astronomically, and I just really think this council should take a look at what we're doing step by step, because at the end of the year, when we look at what we spent in bonding, it's going to raise your hair.
I'm okay with proceeding. The work needs to get done. If we're going to take this approach, Mayor, on every project that we try to do, you're going to get absolutely nothing done for the next few years. If you take this philosophy of every project has to be fully grant-funded and we can't bond, we're going to do absolutely nothing on this council for the town.
Well, I completely disagree with you. We can get $252,000 worth of something done. What, Daniel?
And you will not have completed the job, so you will go, go back and do that project in, what, three or four years to complete it?
Let's take a look at the scope of the work and see if it could be reduced. To your point, we don't want to leave out something that is fundamental to, to the area, but maybe we got to cut down on, on the, on the length of the project to stay within the, the means of the bonding, uh, excuse me, of the grant, grant money.
And then do the, the part that we cut out when?
With, with the next grant, just like we do, we piggyback.
I think it's very inefficient.
Well, you, in order to answer that, you, you would have to know the scope of the, of the project.
It's here.
Right, well, is there an area that we can cut back on?
You're the one, you're the one bringing it up, so I would assume you did, you did the homework and, and...
I did the homework on the math.
Right.
That's what I did. And I would like our engineer to give us an opinion on, on whether or not we, we can go to a certain point and stay more within the, the grant amount. Yes, Tom, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, on both of these...
Could you hit your button so we can hit you, hear you?
Thank you. On, on both of these grants, both the DOT Municipal Aid and the CDBG grant, we are not told in advance what the grants are going to be. We take a guess based upon, you know, kind of what we're hearing, quote unquote, what we did last year, so on and so forth, and we say, okay, we think we might be able to get 250 this year, let's shoot for that. So we shoot for something a little above that, and again, so that's, that's one limitation. We, we try to, try to get it to work, and the next thing is, we want to go from intersection to intersection. We don't want to stop in the middle of a block, because that can cause some issues, because it, you know, the, where the seams are and how the drainage works and all the other stuff. So those are two issues that we have. Also, some grant, some of the entities that provide grants want to see some kind of effort from the municipality to, to fund some of the job. It's, I don't know if it's an unruly kind of thing, but we have to be careful if that's the situation. I'll, I'll call the, the grant writer on that to get an opinion. We can adjust these to some extent. Like I said, the only thing I would do is, I really wouldn't suggest stopping a job mid-block.
In where, Tom? Would you?
I was saying, I would, I wouldn't suggest, recommend ending a job mid-block just to make the number.
I don't think that's the question here. We all know better than that.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is, for instance, for the CDBG, both of those projects or both portions go from 53rd to 55th. I don't have the map in front of me, but let's say that both of those blocks are the same length. So if you did 17th Avenue, I'm sorry, let's go by the year. If you did 2022, 2020, you're not going to get 159 down to 122. You'd have to cut the number in half, so you'd be at 80,000 on a 122 grant, which won't work, if you went, if the blocks are evenly spaced, and I'm not, I, I believe they're pretty even. But what I'm saying is, if you're going to go intersection to intersection, that that limits your flexibility in meeting, in meeting a grant number.
So what you're saying is, if you took the smaller scale of work, we'd be leaving money on the table as far as the grant goes. If we take the larger scale, then it's going to cost us $136,000 on top of the grant.
Correct, and they do not like when you return money, and that may affect your grant next year. They may not give you as much next year if you don't use all your money, because they want to give money, and they want to, they want to be able to say, we provided Elmwood Park with this much money, look all the work we helped you guys do, so if you're not going to use the money, they're just not going to give it to you.
Can we do this? Can you take us another look at this and then advise us at our next meeting? If, in fact, you can curb it without destroying the, the method of going from block to block? Is there anywhere in there that we can cut without actually cutting the integrity of the project?
You're saying adjust the, adjust the scope of work as far as the work we're doing?
Yes. I, I guess it's the limits I'm talking about. Is this, is this block to block right now?
There's two blocks. It goes from 53rd to 55th.
Okay, and if we just did one block, you're saying we're going to be leaving grant money on the table?
I, I, I don't have the map in front of me.
Okay, so can you please...
I believe those blocks are fairly even, but I believe that they're at least close.
All right, Tom, would the council agree to that?
If I, if I may, if we identified these blocks as a need of, of repair, and we're going to use our grant toward these blocks, I'm not for doing a chop, or chopping up the job for our residents if we had this money allocated to this. If we're going to use our grant toward this, I'm not sure why we're going to ask them to chop up the job for, for a little bit, $100,000.
Mr. Fasolo, to answer your question, my driving thought is $136,000 in bonding money. We're spending more than what's coming in. You do that 10 times, and you're looking at $5 million.
And again, if we keep doing this, we're, we're setting ourselves back. This is the same thing we did for the, for the drainage and the, and the road program that you vetoed last time. We're going to do this for every road project now?
No, if you, if you, well, if you, if that's your philosophy, I, I'm not trying to change that, but what I'm saying is, you do one block instead of two, and the next grant, you do the next block as such. Across the board, that, that's going to bring down our bonding, but by, by every item we touch, you're going above the grant money or whatever was proposed for that project, and you're going to the bonding of it, you're just putting this town in debt.
I understand where you're coming from, but I think if we do it that way, it's going to take us another 30 years to fix blocks in this town.
Mayor, this is new from you. Since you've been mayor and council before that, you've passed countless proposals like this, where a grant did not cover the whole project, but the council identified the project was needed. Now, all of a sudden, we're, every single project that comes forward, we're going to try, try to meet the grant dollar for dollar.
Well, let me answer your question.
It's coming out of nowhere.
I've been asking the CFO for the last two years since I got here, what the grant, what the bonding amount was, and he had told me it's been a million and a half to 2 million. Well, lo and behold, when I finally get the report, it's been close to 4, 4, and 5. That's why I'm being more adamant at this point.
You, you didn't get here two years ago, Mayor. You've been doing this for like 20 years.
I can't hear you mumbling.
I'm saying, you, you didn't get here two years ago. You've been doing this on and off for 20 years, so you've been part of all of these, you've probably passed, probably, I would bet, a couple dozen of these in your time serving Elmwood Park. And now, all of a sudden, we're, we're going to change our philosophy and slow down actual work getting done.
At a million and a half and two, which I was being told, I wasn't so concerned about it as much as I am now when you're talking about 4 and 5. Big difference, double.
Right, and we're probably not going to raise taxes this year or next year.
Well, then you reduce them. Then you reduce the taxes.
Can we go into a vote to decide if we're just going to move forward the way it is as we...
Sure.
I second that.
Do you have any discussion, any more you want to discuss, Sandy?
No, I, I, I agree. I think we need to move forward. We can't keep stopping these projects and waiting and chopping, and I agree, I, I agree with what Councilman Fasolo said. We, you know, I, I felt we were going forward with this, but each time we come across a new project, we're going to keep doing this.
Yeah.
And this is why we're so, where we are today is because this has gone on for many years, so...
Yeah, where you, where you are today is you're $29 million in debt. If everything stopped right now, and that loan was called in, you'd have to double everybody's taxes in the town for that year, double, so somebody who's paying 18,000 would have to pay $36,000 in order to satisfy the debt.
That, that, Mayor, what you're saying is absurd, like it has no relation to reality and what we're dealing with here.
Well, that's your opinion.
It's a soundbite, but it really has no connection to reality.
Oh, it does.
At no point will any taxpayer have to pick up their portion of the debt of the town. That's absurd that you're even saying that.
Well, if everything stopped hypothetically now, if everything stopped and the debt was called in, where would the money come from?
What does that even mean? What are we even talking about?
The debt this town has.
But why are we even having this discussion? Has no relation to reality.
Because we keep adding on every project bonding money, which adds to the debt. That's why we're having this conversation. Call the roll, please, on, on the...
Yes, Mayor, so just to confirm, we all agree on 1A that will be held and revisited because, you know, okay, perfect. because, you know, okay, perfect. So for 1B, would, an "I" would mean to proceed as is, and a "nay" would be to hold this item as well. Council members, Balla Sherry?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Golbeck?
Move forward, yes.
Pellegrine?
Aye.
Sheridan?
Mary.
Council President Fasolo?
Yes.
Okay. So with that being said, this item will be on the agenda for next week. 1C is current estimate number one and change order number one from fiscal year 18 NJDOT municipal aid, municipal aid, which was used on Mola Boulevard. Any questions or concerns? 1D is current estimate number one for the basketball court improvements. Any questions or concerns?
No. Nice job there as far as the work looks. It was done very well.
Yes, I worked with that contractor before. He's very help, very good. And again, we have to come back next year and do a little bit more work, but at least we got the courts done.
Yeah. Yeah. I was down there, Tom. The issue with the fence was all resolved, correct?
Yes.
Okay. 1E was correspondence from the state of New Jersey to Alamo Group in regard to award approval for the various streets 2020 project under the fiscal year 2020 municipal aid program. So that's more of an FYI to ensure that Alamo had received that. With that being said, I will turn it over to Tom for his monthly status report.
Thank you.
And Mayor and council, would you like him to proceed with only items that have updates?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, this is updates. The first one is the Vietnam Veteran Memorial. We're putting the spec together for the statue alone because that's the longest lead time. And while that is, they're estimating, I believe, eight to 10 months. So while that's in the works, we can get the rest of the design done. We wanted to put that out first. Next item...
Tom, how far off are we on that, to that point, to get us to that point?
I've got to go back to who's preparing it to see if I can't get that on for the February regular meeting.
Okay. Appreciate if you move on that due to the lead time. We're at least eight to a year away when we do order the statue. So I think it's imperative that we don't put the brakes on this. So full steam ahead.
Right, understood. And the issue with this is that I'm not just ordering, you know, a catch basin. You know, this thing has, you know, there's a lot of intricacies and how they want it, the shaping, and it's a little bit different. So I want to make sure that we get everything in here correctly so we get what we're looking to get.
Okay.
Traffic signal warrant. We had another meeting. We had a meeting with the county and Sergeant Scott was involved with that and our design team to discuss two alternatives. Our next step is to have a discussion with the two property owners that may be affected by the work to start talking about takings and whatnot to make that intersection fit. Orchard Street improvements. We started that work. There was an issue with the property owner. I went down and looked at it, and we're going to reexamine that, the source of that flooding. Mr. Cars and I walked a lot of that drainage one day, trying to see where the issues may be. And we're proceeding with that, probably with some videoing of the pipe to see if there's blockages rather than if it's a great issue in the street. So we're on top of that item. Rosemont improvements, which I did not, I'm seeing here, was not updated properly. We are proceeding with bid packages for the lighting. The original intent, when I first came on board, we were advised that they were going to use a cooperative, co-op vendor. There were issues with the co-op vendor and the proper use of a co-op vendor. So now we're going back to the original standard bid to get that work done. Mola Boulevard, closeout paperwork, that's in progress. Other authorized general engineering tasks. I was asked to look at Sabo Court and Paul Court with respect to drainage and sanitary complaints. Again, Mr. Cars and I walked that. I'm in the process of putting some paperwork together for that. Wyard away, there was a question on getting utilities to a couple of properties. Again, Mr. Cars and I walked through that. I offered some opinion. And I guess there was someone looking at property and they have not inquired since. I haven't heard anything. So we stand ready to jump back into that if required.
Tom, going back to Paul Court and Sabo Court, what did you visually see? Did you see any problems there in terms of the drainage?
Well, you know, that section of Elmwood, a lot of Elmwood is flat. You know, the pipe slopes aren't great. There were, you know, when I was there, there were a lot of leaves around. One of the pictures I took, residents are trying to keep their properties clean, which makes the area look good, but they're sweeping it into the street. So when it rains, the leaves wash into the inlet, and that can cause clogging and whatever, which is, you know, is just the nature of leaves. You know, we could suggest going to a bagged system where they pick up, you know, the residents bag the leaves and that prevents that leaf litter from getting into the drainage systems. Some of the piping is a little small. But again, you know, the rainfall, the characteristics of rainfall have been changing over the years. We no longer seem to get a nice, moderate rain. It's all or nothing. So when you have systems, some of the really old systems are only designed to take a 10-year event. Probably, you know, more recent systems, saying, you know, 40 years ago or less, are designed for a 25-year event. So when you get hit with something like an IDA or a large but brief storm, the systems simply aren't designed to take it. And that's not a design flaw. It's, at some point, you have to make a decision on just how far do you want to go? You know, do you want to spend the money to install a drainage system that'll handle a hurricane? And I don't think you do.
No, that's not feasible.
And again, that's just part of the design of things.
But what is feasible is whatever, within our control, that is taken care of. Debris, light debris, that would actually stop the flow. As far as cleaning the channel, that's virtually impossible when we're talking about the way it runs through the town. Areas like on Kip Avenue, the Culvert there, and Martha Avenue, those areas there, I know we're getting some buildup sentiment at the bridge location. And I know Scott has been on it and you've been on it, but we have to really stay on the backs of the county there and push, 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 push. That's how we've got it done in the past, Tom.
Right. And again, I know Scott's been in touch with the county. I mean, that started months and months ago, and it just seems like one thing on top of the other. And the county, they have breakdowns, they have personnel issues, then we have a storm that they want to go into the water because the water's too high. And then it kind of cycles back to illnesses and then vacation. It just seems like it doesn't want to catch up.
Tom, Mike, I think it's time we pay a visit down there to the county. We've got a list of items anyhow. We want to go over with the ball field, et cetera. That might put some, maybe we can instill some urgency at that meeting. Okay, Tom?
Now, the other thing I just want to point out, when you do the area around a culvert, it gives, I mean, it might help a little bit, but it doesn't help as much as you would think. For instance, if you have a channel and then you clean out part of the channel and you don't clean out the rest, all you do is create a low spot in the channel.
Yeah.
You know, you're not, the proper way to do it is to do a study, figure out what you need to remove, start all the way at the downstream end and work up. Because if you just do spots where you're digging out, you're really not doing the whole lot. I mean, it looks nicer, but that's about it.
But the optics of silt in front of a culvert lends itself to a negative picture, if you will. I understand what you're saying about resolving the problem, but also we have to resolve the optics that everybody sees.
Understood.
I know that's superficial in a statement, but it does matter in terms of people calling up. For instance, the first thing they'll say when you do get an IDA like we did, and I agree with you, there's not much you can do in a situation like that, they'll point to that area and say, well, look at this. And visually, they're right, visually.
Right.
They don't understand the engineering aspect of it, but visually, so.
Okay, continuing on, Fleischer Brook at 455, or 545. Mola, this is a situation where the channel, the concrete channel wall is looking like it needs some repair. We've been back and forth with the county now for, gosh, it's got to be a month, or at least a month, probably closer to two with the holidays and all. And the issue there is, there was some thought at the county level, because they had the paperwork for it, that that section of channel was relocated years ago, prior to probably 1940 or so, that the channel was relocated to accommodate the parkway. It turns out, the person who thought that was thinking about the wrong section. So we have no documentation that they could find, that we could find, to indicate who built that section of channel. So...
There was some speculation it might have been the parkway.
Correct. But we, there was, but when they looked into it, that section that that person was thinking about was a different section. And we couldn't, we can't seem to find any documentation as far as who built that section of wall. So it would seem that unless the property owner has a deed that shows an easement, which I'm sure he would have seen by now, it's going to be on the property owner.
It's going to be on who's?
On the property owner.
Can, $64,000 question is, can, is that definitive or is still speculation?
I mean, at this point, we spent quite a bit of time on this, and I know, you know, I think I owe this guy lunch at least at the county, because he was digging and digging and trying to find plans. And he said, look, this is all we've got. I mean, he says, you know, we're going back, like I was saying, probably back to the 40s when that thing was built.
If that wall falls, who's going to have to make the move to clear the stream?
Well, I guess the town's going to get the first phone call. Then we'd probably call in the county and then figure it out later. And, but on the other hand, if you start repairing one person's wall, you're going to own them all.
Oh, sure. No, we want the rightful owner to do the remediation, but it doesn't seem like anybody can tell us who the rightful owner of the stream is there, or the wall, I should say.
Like I said, up to now, unless the property owner, I mean, we could, we could have someone, we could hire a title searcher and go back and pull all the deeds for that property as far back as we can go. We can try that.
What kind of a cost factor is that?
Depends how far back they have to go. It could be, you know, a few grand.
The council understand what's going on with this situation? I think it's something that is like, it's threatening to us. That wall falls, it's in our town, in a stream, and the backup, an IDA came from that area being clogged with debris as the water was coming down the creek. So you're going to have the same problem there. If we get a storm, that wall goes down, that's going to be, there's going to be backup flooding to East 54th Street. Yeah, sure.
I think we should do our due diligence and do the title search because if we put it on the property owner now, they're going to have a big complaint there. But if we do the work ourselves, we, like Tom said, we own everyone. And if we don't do it right and something happens, we're liable. So let's do our due diligence, do the title work. And at the end of the day, it is what it is. That's the last straw that we can get there.
I agree, Mike. Does the council agree with that scenario? Everybody's in agreement?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll work with the borough attorney who may have more contacts with title searches than I do. The rest of the item, the next new item is, there was an issue of the parkway looking to obtain ownership of some property near Frederick's Court. We provided the documentation to the borough attorney on that with respect to, you know, what we may or may not need it for and the tax map information.
Maybe we can interest them in buying that creek as a caveat to this deal?
As a matter of fact, Mayor, if I may, what they're really taking is airspace. They don't even want the way.
Right.
Correct.
So where that home will be, will be empty state property?
It would, it's not a taking of the land, it's a taking of the air use. That's what a deposit in a court, $2,500. And that's what I'm trying to get.
Okay.
But we're referring to the house next to the parkway, right?
No.
No, no. That's, this is the property, not the parkway.
The property's on the riverside of River Road, across from Frederick's, more or less.
We have to show some documentation on the borough, so that's what I'm...
Sal, I think I could speak for the council. We'd all like to sell the air above our homes. $2,500 apiece, we'll...
Yeah, I have what you're doing. We want that, I have to reach the air, airspace.
All right.
The next items are the proposals that we already spoke about, with the exception of the fiscal year 2021. We didn't talk about the Mola Boulevard Linda to Philip proposal. We spoke about the other two that I believe. So we've got the, I'm not sure what the council wants to do with that one. And that is, those are the only new items for this month's report.
So Tom, is there a proposal that I didn't have on the agenda that you submitted?
Yes.
And that was for?
It was our proposal number 2020-24.
I think Mr. Philigno might have to check. We may have been in communication in the past with Costa Engineering on that specific project. So just double check the timeline there.
But that's all I have here. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions for Tom?
Thank you, Tom.
I'm sorry, just a comment. Tom, on the Marina, like, it would be good and nice to, like, you know, make some strong progress on that in the first quarter.
Yeah, we have, we submitted the preliminary assessment. They accepted it with no, with no comment, which was good. We have everything we're dealing with except now, we're just trying to iron out the boat ramp, the new boat ramp, because that is actually physically in the water. So that's kind of specialized construction. And I want to make sure that, you know, we get that right as far as budgeting and whatever. We have relocated the sidewalk because we had to bring it down off the embankment of the roadway because putting it on the embankment of the roadway required fill. We can't put fill in the floodplain. So now the sidewalk, I think, actually looks a bit nicer. It comes down into the park and kind of meanders a little bit and then goes, kind of goes back up. Not real far, just down to the bottom of that slope. The other day, we got a response from Green Acres about some tree removal, which I responded to. Basically, a lot of the trees, when I went out there, I could see a lot of the trees were not healthy. I responded to her to that effect. I'm going to see what comes back, if we have to go farther, if I have to get our landscape architect to go look at it and say, yes, you know, this tree is ill for this or this or this matter. Or, you know, right now, New Jersey's suffering significantly from emerald ash borer. So if you've got a large, if you've got an ash tree, it's going to, it's going to come down. I was told by an arborist, within five years, there will be no more ash trees in New Jersey.
How much money did we get granted on that project? Do you know, Tom?
I think I have it here.
We have 750 in grants?
Yes.
I want to see even potentially more than that.
We put two together, I think, 750.
We waited for the second one. I think 750, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the second, I think it was 250. And then I never, I never thought we reached it. I think that's where we were at.
Yes, it says 750. Tom, is your office able to, and maybe this exists, like, not a high quality, but like a colorful rendering of what this will look like? So we can, like, picture this. I know all the components to the project, but is there something that we can have a picture of that?
We could probably colorize the site plan without a lot of...
Yeah, something that I can, you know, like, because I know the components, but I still can't picture what it will look like in the end. So if you guys can do something, a visual aid, that'd be helpful.
I can get something. I mean, it'll be basically two, you know, three colors. You know, what's existing is going to be a lighter color. What's proposed is going to be a darker color. And it'll be greens and grays and whatever. We can do that.
Yeah, something that'll help us picture the final product.
That's fine. I can do that.
You know, it might not hurt. I don't think you were there when we had the walkthrough meeting. Maybe you can arrange another meeting with the ideas at your... meeting, maybe you can arrange another meeting with the ideas at your disposal.
Yeah. No, if Tom can do like, like what I just suggested, and then I could build off of that if anyone has comments, you know, any, whatever, you know?
Okay.
Now, is this something that we can piggyback off with another grant after that, so that we don't spend in abundance to the grant monies?
Well, we're going to go back and look at the grant, because in dealing with the DEP, it doesn't look like the dock is going to be a permissible item. Basically, the dock will require an individual permit, what they call an individual permit, where you have to show hardship or hardship or some, you know, dire public needs for safety, you know, and that's just not, you're not going to show that.
Well, I think we should show them the film of Mike saving that girl and her child, and maybe that'll.
Well, I'm, you know, what they're saying is, you know, for an event, for instance, if you put a dock out there and there's a high water situation and there's debris floating down the river, it's going to catch on the dock.
Yeah.
If not destroy the dock. Plus, as a dock goes out into the, into the water, you have the water, the river's pushing on it constantly. So there's issues with it. If it was a lake or something, then we could, we could probably work something. But because it's a moving body of water, you know.
But how about the fact that it is the launch for rescue on the Besake River for, I believe Garfield uses our Marina for a launch? Is that correct?
We have our own.
Do you know, Daniel?
Garfield has their own.
I'm not involved with boat launches in Garfield, so.
Okay.
Garfield's got their own.
Well, that, that might be an angle.
When we read Get Our River Walk, we have our own boat.
You have your own, okay. Fairlawn, I don't know if they have their own, but they, we, they all have their own?
I will revisit that.
Okay, that's a poor suggestion, then.
I would just say that, I mean, we need to exhaust that scenario, because, and this is not a knock on you, Tom, because you're newer, but when Alamo Engineering put these plans together and what we could do, a dock was always part of the plan.
Yeah.
I understand that, and that's why.
That's problematic.
I went back, I went back to our permitting person, and he didn't seem to be supportive of that decision to say that that was possible.
But, all right, so, but can we do something that is on the edge of the earth, the ground?
If it involves fill, it's going to be a problem, but we may be able to make up for it. So I'll go back and revisit if you could put a, I'll call it an observation platform.
Or even like a gazebo that goes as far as it can, you know, something, you know, something nice, like if they tell us no dock, I wouldn't want to do nothing in its place, you know?
I'll, I'll look at that again.
So I think once you sketch out what this will look like, we can, we can build off of that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you again, Tom. Item number two, correspondence, was actually already previously discussed, reviewed, and handled by Mr. Feligno and Mr. Engraffia. So moving on to resolutions. 3A, we have two requests for vacation buybacks. I know Mr. Feligno wanted to discuss this further, yes.
Did you want me to talk about that, Mayor?
Yeah, please, it's the old twisted elm we're talking about.
No, we're, we're past that.
No?
No, we're on the next one, Mayor.
What are we on?
3A.
3B?
Oh, there you go.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, please, Michael.
So we got a request for some vacation buybacks, which is allowed by borough policy and/or collective bargaining agreement. Problem I had with this was they submitted them, well, first of, first of all, they submitted them in December for 2022, which that I would not put forth. So checked with the labor attorney, who says he has no problem paying them in January. However, he would like to see an agreement drawn up that says if for any reason we part ways with these employees, and that can be for a variety of reasons, they would owe us that money back, because technically it's not earned yet. So he's okay with it, provided they sign the agreements. I don't see an issue with it if they sign the agreements, and he would prepare that agreement if the council's okay with it.
Mike, have you discussed this with the CFO in terms of availability of the funds?
Yes, I discussed it with the CFO. It's a, it's a formality that people go through every year. It's just they're asking for it early this year, rather than, customarily, they come closer to the summer, when all or part of it has at least been earned. This is a little unique, but with the labor attorney's approval and an agreement signed, the borough would be protected, and that's the main concern.
Rachel.
Hey, any, any questions or concerns?
I have a question.
I would just like to say, I'm okay with it, but like, can we send like a memo out to them saying that this can't be done in the future, Mike, or no?
I just feel like, I just feel like it looks bad, because you're requesting it, I mean, in December for the next year, when again, like the chief said, it's not even earned yet.
Well, it was denied, the December request was denied, I asked them to resubmit in January. So, I mean, obviously, if they're asking for it, there's a need. So we want to try to help our people out while protecting the borough, so it's up to you. If you permit it now and then say no more, I don't know that that's a practice we want to get into. Either we, either we do it, or we don't do it.
I have a question. If this employee just happens to resign in February, how do we know they're capable of paying back these days?
So they would, we could withhold their, their last pay, we could take it out of any accrued time that they would be turning in. So there's, or, you know, at the end of the day, if there was none of that available, which there would be, we could always take action against them.
Council okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, so that will be placed on the agenda. Next is the endorsing resolution for the CDBG application for 15th Avenue roadway improvements. 3C is a resolution to refund overpayment. 3D, we have two handicap parking requests that have been reviewed and approved by the police department. 3E is an after-school program and gym supervisor hires requested by the recreation department.
Are these just typical seasonal hirings?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, 3F, on an annual basis, we enter into an agreement with the Bergen County Utilities Authority to be our certified recycling professional, which is needed to submit your yearly tonnage report. There's no cost to the municipality, so we just need a resolution authorizing the execution of the agreement. Any questions? Okay, 3G, there were updates to our policies and procedures manual done by Mr. Feligno and our labor attorney, so we need a supporting resolution adopting the new policies and procedures Any questions? Okay, 3H is a request to make a snowplow purchase on behalf of the police department so that they can assist the DPW in snowplowing efforts on municipal lots, should time allow it.
Mike, that's a nice savings with that state contract.
Yes, right, Mayor, it's excellent.
And we got another plow on the road, this time it's police-sized.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have for resolutions for departmental reports. We have our grant writer Millennium Strategies report for year end through 2021. 4B, we have our municipal court report with numbers from November and December 2021. And then we also have the library board meeting minutes from November 15th, 2021. Any questions?
Now, just with the Millennium, and I didn't have a chance to do the math, if we were to tally up the grants that they brought into us versus what we paid them, should be a big spread. Mike, do you have any kind of?
Mayor, right at the top, you have the total.
$1,533. And what do, do you know what we paid them?
I don't want to say any more than $30,000. I think it's less, but I'm not 100% sure.
Not an issue.
Mayor, I can say that I work very closely with them. Ryan is our assigned person, and he is proactive, he will reach out and forward things that he thinks are good for us, and then anything I send his way, he's on it immediately and has an answer, usually in the same day. So great company, and I'm very happy with them.
It sounds, it sounds real good, Mike, and the numbers don't lie. $1,533,000 plus, and we're paying them $30,000, $40,000. That's, that's a nice ratio.
Okay, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
So I guess we'll, it's a committee report. We'll start off with Councilwoman Valasteri.
Okay, recreation, the basketball practice started back up, they were closed for two weeks. Games will begin January 28th. The after-school program is running well. They are looking for after-school and summer camp counselors, so please contact the rec if interested. Softball has started their signups, and what they have left is Saturday, January 15th, 10:00 a.m. to 12:30, Thursday, January 20th, 6:30 to 8:30, and Saturday, January 22nd, 10:00 a.m. to 12:30. Registration is held at the Elmwood Park Recreation Center in the game room. That's all for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dennis?
No updates this time.
Good, expected. Smart.
So progress, progress.
Councilman Golebeck?
Progress.
Thank you, Mr. Golebeck. Councilwoman Pellegrini?
Yeah, just one. Board of Health update, their next meeting will be held on Monday, January 17th, at 7:00 p.m. This will be their first meeting in 2022. New officers will be selected for the year, and the public is always welcome to attend. Progress, Mayor.
Thank you, Lorraine. Councilwoman Sheridan?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just have an update on the Elmwood Park. Home Motors Association is running a casino trip to the Wind Creek. That would be on January 28th. The bus would leave the rec center at 10 o'clock, come back by 7:00. The cost is $40, you get back 35. I have a phone number if anyone is interested for Linda that runs it. I reached, I also reached out to the senior center. Right now, they're keeping low because of the COVID, but I will have a report for February. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council President, Mr. Fasolo.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I just want to reiterate what I said at the beginning of the meeting to thank the chief and Mr. Engraffia for drafting up our new emergency services. That's really, really important for our town, so thank you for that. I also want to thank Mr. Scalcione for bringing this, this list to us. 73% of adults are vaccinated in Elmwood Park, which seems like it's good, but it's one of the lowest in Bergen County, which is not, not good. I think we should look into doing some sort of vaccine drive for our residents, if we could look into that, Chief.
Yes.
Thank you. Progress, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Fasolo. And I'm sure you people have heard enough of my voice this evening, so I'll keep this brief. I just would like to remind the two newcomers that this is a work session and is probably very inundating at the beginning, but we are here to answer questions for you new people. Don't, don't feel like you're being stupid about asking a question, because that, that'll help you learn even quicker. So be relaxed about that. That's it for me. Second public hearing, anyone from the public here to speak on anything they would like? Mr. Frytak?
Jeffrey Frytak, 35, I do have a question. Nightly was much talk regarding bond amounts and how much should be spent versus CDBG funding and grants.
Jeff, could you take that down just so we can hear you?
Okay, and grants and things like that.
Thank you.
Now, the bond amount that we have outstanding currently versus what our budget is, I would assume there's a calculation for that. So how does ours stand with other communities, 70-plus communities in Bergen County?
We got a double A rating, okay?
I'm not, there must be.
That, that answers the question, Jeff. In other words, we're in good standings with the bonding.
Right.
Okay?
But this is how much we have outstanding.
$29 million.
Okay, versus how much our budget is. What is normally the amount?
Well, we're.
Or our budget rate.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we're about $30 million, our budget? Is that correct? Yeah.
But there's usually a ratio for something like that.
Well, the ratio is, the budget for that year would be what our debt is.
I know how you would calculate, but I'm saying what is typically in Bergen County the rate? Maybe somebody might want to. Okay. Anyway, that's what I was just interested in knowing.
Okay, would you like us?
There's a lot of talk about it this evening, and.
Do you want an answer back on that? Because we'll.
No, I think maybe it's even available. I didn't, I didn't know it was going to come up this evening, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else here to speak? If not, I'll close the public portion, and with that, I think we need a motion to go into executive. Second. All in favor? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss personnel matters, litigation, legal reports, minutes will be capped, and once the confidentiality of the above no longer requires the confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public, now therefore be resolved, that the public be excluded from this meeting.